Legions.
Federal legions, true and black, of the United States of America, and true republic of which is taken, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Matt, over to you.
Sure. Sad news to share. Longtime Sanford educator and administrator Sharon Remick passed away last Wednesday after a brief illness. Sharon was a special person who cared deeply about students, staff, and the Sanford community. She positively impacted countless people and left a lasting impression on everyone who knew her. So, asking the people to keep Sharon, her family, and your thoughts and prayers. We'd like to have a moment of silence right now in Sharon's memory. Thank you. A memorial service for Sharon will be held at the Carl Heald and Black Funeral Home, right here in Springvale, this Wednesday, March 20th, at 4:00 p.m. Visitation will be from 3:00 p.m. until the service time for that.
Thank you very much. Moving on, no adjustments. Approval of minutes, Monday, March 11th, 2024, budget workshop at 4:30 p.m., and March 11th, regular meeting at 6:00 p.m. Recommendation to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. All in favor? All in favor. Public comments. We've got many. Thank you so much for coming and for wanting to speak. We also have a Zoom speaker. Before we start listening to public comments, I would like to read a statement. In order that the committee have time to fully consider and discuss the issue, I'm setting aside up to three minutes. Let's say, I don't think we need more than half an hour. There aren't many people that have signed up to speak, so I'm going to say half an hour right now, and three minutes for each person. In addition, I would like to say, please, once you have spoken, make sure that you say everything you want to say. We're not going to have comments from the back or any additional comments afterwards, please. So make sure that you're concise and you say everything you need to say. For those that have not participated in our meetings before, I want to review a few rules ahead of time to ensure that the public comment process goes smoothly and there are no surprises. At the outset, we ask that speakers identify themselves, and please try to be brief and try not to repeat yourself just for the sake of time, so everybody gets a chance to speak. We know discussions of school-related issues can get emotional, but please remember, our children are watching and we are all neighbors, so please be civil. We will not permit profanity or shouting at one another, or comments that disparage and attack individuals or groups of individuals. Speakers should direct all comments to the committee. This is an opportunity for us to listen to your opinions that relate to school and educational matters. It is not a public debate or a conversation, so no questions should be directed to the committee, and the committee will not be responding to any questions if they are asked. We want to listen and take in everything that you have to say. The committee will not permit complaints or allegations against staff members. These are personnel matters which the committee is not permitted to hear in public. If there are complaints against staff, they will be handled appropriately through our complaint procedure. Thank you for your patience while I made this introduction, and I have hope and confidence that your participation will be helpful and constructive to our work. Thank you so much. Okay. Lenny Holmes?
If you don't mind, we do have the red timer there, so just to help you with a visual as well. Right there.
Now I'm on? I think I am. Yeah, there we go. All right. Good evening. My name is Lenny Holmes. I'm the Director of Alternative Education at Bonny Eagle High School, but I also serve as the President of the Alternative Education, excuse me, the Alternative Education Association of Maine. It's in my capacity as the President that I'm here to speak in support of the alternative education program at Sanford High School. Having been involved in education for close to 30 years, I realize budget season is never fun for anyone. No matter what, there are difficult choices that have to be made, and in the toughest time, cuts are made to programs, even though there are many who see the real value of the programs that are being eliminated. The hard reality is sometimes we simply can't pay for everything. However, it does still become an issue of choices. Valuing those programs which have a direct impact on student lives should be the priority. Alternative education programs of today support students' social and emotional needs, as well as provide them an education by skilled teachers. Teachers who can meet the individual learning needs in a smaller, non-traditional setting, where these students can thrive, earn a high school diploma, and have the opportunity to become successful adults that contribute to our communities. I have heard and read the testimonials of Sanford students and the programs and their parents. It is evident, losing that one thing that's keeping them in school is going to have a devastating impact on their lives. Choosing to cut alternative education is not only short-sighted, it is the definition of kicking the can down the road. You could be guaranteed that a decision like this will lead to some of the Sanford students dropping out of school. This is just the hard facts. Data shows students that drop out cost society close to $300,000 over their lifetime in social services. Students who drop out will also earn over $300,000 less than those who graduate from high school. The unemployment rate for these students is 45% higher than students who graduate from high school. 75% of all crimes are committed by individuals who have dropped out of high school. The investment in alternative education and these students is not only changing lives, it also makes strong social and fiscal policy. Finally, in my role as the Director of Alternative Education at Bonny Eagle High School, I sometimes have to consider whether I need to send a student back to the high school, as they are not working out in our program. I never take this lightly, because I know the chances are high that they will drop out of school, and I'm literally changing the trajectory of their life. I have one rule I ask myself before doing this, and I would suggest you do the same. The question I ask is, what would I do if that was my child sitting across from me? If it was my child, would I still make the same decision? I implore you to ask yourself, if your child was one of those students in the alternative education program, would you be considering cutting it? If it was your child who would now be at a higher risk of dropping out, would you fight to save it and all the things it values? The reality is, as I stated, there are few, if any, programs offered by schools that have a more direct impact on student lives than what happens in alternative education classrooms. Your legacy as school board members will be felt for years to come if alternative education at Sanford High School is cut out of your budget. If it was your child, would you do it?
Thank you. Rhea McCoy?
Good evening. Here again. As we're nearing this final decision being made that impacts our most vulnerable students in our community, with the removal of funding for our 20-plus-year-old alternative education program and the elementary social workers that serve the students who very well may be those alternative education students in just a few years when they hit a high school. I want to remind you again about your dedication to, or remind you about the school board's dedication to the responsibility to acquire adequate funding to support the education process that's stated in our school mission and philosophy. The current students and the future Sanford alternative students are our future community members, leaders, future teachers, future school board members. A chain is only as strong as its weakest link. Alternative ed and social workers are the foundations that exist to strengthen our weakest links. Without these people and programs, we condemn our most underserved students and our entire community to an uncertain future. I said it the last time I was here. On the picture of alternative education, I went to an alternative education program. I graduated in 1995. I am a certified teacher and have been for 20 years. So, it is a program that makes a difference. The people that I went to school with, most of them did really well. It may not have been Sanford's program, but it is the basis of what helps those weakest links, if it's temporary or if it's something that is systematic for them, or, you know, if it's been lifelong for them. So, thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Sarah, is there somebody on Zoom?
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, Pam.
Okay, because I've lost my ability to see you for some reason. So, I shouldn't go over because I timed myself, but obviously, just let me know. My name is Pam Cody. I sent an email earlier today as I was not sure I would be able to join the Zoom, forgetting I'm in a different time zone and could join. So, I will not repeat all of my email, but I do want to make a public statement. I first started paying attention to this budget before I heard about the potential cut to the alternative learning program. I knew that Esther Grant money was ending, and I was concerned that some of the funding would be moved into the regular budget. I knew this could cause a significant increase to taxes. Many have expressed surprise at this difficult budget year, but Tom and I were not surprised as we followed the use of the Esther funds as far back as 2021, and in 2022, April 2022, received an email from a former budget committee member, one that had been sent to the city council. Over a month ago, I reread the email, and then I went back and watched the February 2nd, 2022, school budget workshop. So, for these reasons, I was not surprised by Councilor Hanselman's questions and very much appreciated the research and analysis she did. From that email, it was stated by this budget committee member, who actually had been on our budget committee for several years and had served with Tom. I strongly feel that this is taking us down a very tough path, and that those of us who remain to deal with this issue in two to three years, including taxpayers, are going to be in a very rough place. I hope that the conversation in a few years isn't around the painful cuts we will experience, or that we have to increase taxation even more because of factors outside our control, because this is, was, all completely in our control, and then he outlined some efficiencies that I put in the email to you today. So, as taxpayers who follow the budget process, we know we've been on this course since 2021. We know that cutting the alternative learning program will remain in play until this budget season is over. At the last meeting, clarifying comments were made by school committee members that there was no intent to pit programs against each other, and I do believe that to be true and would not expect that from the school committee at all. But I have seen this situation play out many times. It happens because choices have to be made, but it does seem that this program continues to be revisited. So, intended or not, what my ears hear is, we need, A, the social work positions, so we will remove B, the alternative learning program. I haven't given my opinion on the social work positions before, because of course, as a former teacher, I think we should always also consider the social, emotional well-being of our students. But is the only option the removal of a program that promotes some of our at-risk students graduating from high school? Other options have been implemented in the past, like have you explored cutting a small fraction of a percent from each school article? This is an over $60 million budget. Many have shared, including the research data and impact for alternative learning programs, and ironically, I am Zooming in from an adult basic education conference, and I attended a workshop today, and I wanted to share with you a key idea I heard. Barriers to learning exist in the environment, not the learner. In the environment, not the learner. So, thank you for letting me to Zoom in and speak tonight, and I don't want you to think that I don't respect your meeting or work, but I have to get to a meeting myself. So, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you very much for Zooming in, Pam. Sarah, is there anybody else? Okay, thank you. Is there anybody here tonight that would like to speak? Okay, thank you. Moving forward, communications. Oh, you know what? I'm so sorry. I would like to just read out the names of people that have sent in emails. We've gotten emails regarding social workers and the all dead learning from Sidney Wolf, Maggie Owen, Margaret Booker, Peggy Booker, Nicole Lynch, Jolie Lunney, Claire Ledoux, Angela Avery, Jennifer Skremen, Devon Webb, Pam Cody, Leonard Holmes, Jen Skremen, and Tom Cody. Did I miss somebody?
I would just say that they were regarding social workers, the school counselor.
Oh, and also the school counselor. That's right. So, thank you for those of you that sent in emails as well. Okay, moving forward, no communications, committee reports.
Sure. I mentioned the passing of Sharon Remick earlier. Sanford Schools Legacy Foundation recently initiated a campaign to honor Sharon's 45-year career in education in the Sanford School Department by dedicating the library at Margaret Chase Smith School in her honor. Just days before her passing, there was a wonderful tribute that was crafted and shared to launch the campaign. We learned that Sharon had the chance to read the tribute last Friday before she passed, and she was so pleased and so proud for that. So, we'll talk about this a little bit later in the, as we review the Sanford Spotlight, but those who are wishing to contribute to the naming of the Sharon Remick Memorial Library can do so going to the www.sanfordschoolslegacyfoundation.org. And also, I don't know, Melissa, as you represent the school committee on that, the Legacy Foundation, if there's anything else that you want to share as an update of what's going on with all things legacy?
Yeah, absolutely. And actually, we have a Facebook page as well, so if you're not following that, Laura is part of our communications, and she does all kinds of wonderful stories of different places we've named and, you know, it's, you know, honoring different teachers and whatnot. We are working on naming rights for the elementary school, rolling some of that stuff out, and then, of course, you know, if you have a teacher you want to just kind of honor, and you can name a classroom after them, and it's just a really great way to, you know, to honor somebody. And, you know, we were fortunate enough to have this roll out prior to this unfortunate event, so it was really heartwarming.
Thank you, Melissa. And I think the next Legacy Foundation meeting will be next, the first Wednesday in April. And one thing that we're looking at is Legacy also has the opportunity for things that might not be able to make it in the normal school budget, also look at funding for those, and we'll be bringing some of those items at the next meeting on Wednesday, April 3rd. Next committee report is coming from the Sanford Performing Arts Center Advisory Committee. Melissa, do you want to take that one away?
Absolutely. So, I want to thank Brett for this lovely overview here that I'm going to kind of read out to you. So, the SPAC is having a very successful season so far. Many of our Spotlight Series performances have sold out. The Nutcracker, The Greatest Love of All, The Four C Notes, all sold out. Upcoming is the National Tour of Metaphase, the musical, too, that is also looking to hopefully sell out really soon. The last weekend, we had the Mind Reader, Kent Axel. He brought his award-winning mentalist show to our stage from Las Vegas, and the nearly full house had their minds totally blown away. The show highlighted the unique opportunities that our students have to work with professionals on that type of a level and a setting. So, four of our Sanford High School students got to work onstage, and they are sworn to secrecy on his little tricks there. The SHS Theater Company is presenting the musical Guys and Dolls next weekend, with shows on Friday, March 29th, and Saturday on the 30th, so get your tickets. SanfordSPAC.org. They've been working on this show since early in January. Seniors Caitlin Penley has been especially busy in her starring role, and, you know, they're choreographing that show, and it's going to be lots of dancing, and it's going to be amazing, so check that out. The United States Army Field Band and Soldiers Chorus has selected SPAC to present a free community concert, which is a great honor for us, and it just goes to show how awesome our theater actually is. The performance will be held Sunday, April 14th, at 3:00 p.m. Tickets are required, but they are free. So, again, SanfordSPAC.org to get your tickets there. The Third Annual Hannah Powell, I told you Brett, he just loves to let us know what's going on. Memorial piano competition was held two weekends ago. Five finalists shared $6,000 in prize money, and we are honored to work with their family to encourage and recognize pianists across Maine. I think we went to New Hampshire a little bit, too. And then, a priority of SPAC is to provide students access to Spotlight Series events when possible. Free Student Rush tickets are available to most performances. We also bring national tours just exclusively for our students, like Step Africa came, and we were able to give a special performance for our Sanford High School students. And then we have Pete the Cat coming as well in May for our K-2 kiddos, so they get to go experience that wonderful theater. And then Brett would love to wish, wishes to acknowledge the generosity of local businesses and foundations for supporting the program. Their financial support is really how we can continue to operate at such a high level.
Thank you, Melissa. Well done. Any questions, comments on the Performing Arts Center?
No, I'm just glad we have it. And Brett does an amazing job, and it's just a great addition to our community. Okay, moving on. Thank you, Melissa. Superintendent's reports.
Sure. Let's kick it off with our student representatives.
So, I know I talked about this last time, but the spring sports season is officially starting. This week was the first week of pitchers and catchers practices, and next week is when the official season starts, so that's very exciting. But also, in two weeks, so April 3rd, is going to be the NHS Variety Show. So, it's almost like a talent show. We're going to have a ton of acts. It's going to be very exciting. So, yeah.
Are you going to be the MC again?
I will be the MC again.
Okay, excellent, excellent. All right. No pressure, no pressure.
This is a little bit far in the future, but as of right now, the Sanford High School Art Show is set to be May 7th, which will have some live music and then also all of the visual arts and everything. And National Art Honor Society plans to have a sort of fundraiser booth there. If you want some crafted goods by the National Art Honor Society students, we're talking about what we're going to have, but there's probably going to be something along the lines of like planters, buttons, napkin rings, things like that.
I was also just going to add to like what Aiden said about the variety show. So, we actually just finished auditions last week. I think we had like a really good number. It was like around 15 acts, which is really nice. And then there's going to be raffles again this year, which is also really nice from a bunch of different businesses and stuff. But yeah, it should be a really great night, and I'm really looking forward to it. So, there's that to look forward to. And then, just with civil rights right now, we're putting together some slides just to kind of promote women and like kind of the core values that we stand for. So, they're going to be up around the school.
Excellent. Thank you, student representatives. Do you want to transition right into the latest edition of the Sanford Spotlight?
All right. So, we have Sanford's Got Talent 2024. Sanford Middle School's cafeteria was buzzing with excitement and anticipation on Thursday, March 7th, as students, teachers, and families gathered for Sanford's Got Talent 2024. And it had an impressive array of performances, each demonstrating the creativity and skill of Sanford Middle School's student body. The 35th Annual Sanford Band Fest, the Sanford community filled the stands of the competition gym at the high school on Tuesday, March 12th, for the 35th Annual Sanford Band Fest, and that is students enrolled in band classes from grades five through 12. Celebrating partnerships at SRTC, Sanford Regional Technical Center hosted its annual celebrating partnerships event on Thursday, March 15th, in the Agora of Sanford High School, and it celebrates students who have earned internships through the SRTC programs, and provides an opportunity for local partnerships to network. Sites around our schools, at Margaret Chase Smith, Mrs. Lovejoy, and Mr. Mahoney have been busy hitting the courts with some students after school twice a week. At Carl J. Lamb, representatives from Sanford Children's Dentistry visited Carl J. Lamb's pre-K classroom this morning for a dental presentation. At Sanford Middle School, several of Ms. Coveney's eighth-grade students participated in a creative writing contest, and at Sanford Pride, there were some repeat winners for the Golden Spoon Award at Sanford Pride.
So, there were sixth graders that participated in the district music festival, and that was March 9th. And so, the band and chorus students were made up of students from 11 schools in southern Maine. And then, SRTC cosmetology students had a nail, or there's a nail art showcase, and so they had a unique challenge to create a themed set of nails, and each representing a different SRTC program. So, if you'd like to read more about that below, there's a little article linked there. And then also, last Thursday, there was the varsity versus staff basketball game, and so it was run by the Class of 2027 for their first fundraising event of the year. And so, the game was a unique opportunity for faculty and staff to showcase their basketball skills, and they laced up their sneakers and took on the varsity boys and girls basketball teams. And then, as briefly mentioned earlier, MCS is going to be naming their library to honor Sharon Remick. And so at each school, Sharon created an intentional culture. And so, if you'd like to read more about that, there's also an article linked below. And then, from the Spartan Times, Sanford High School currently has two food markets, and so for the 2023-2024 school year, and a school store, and Starving Spartan Cafe. And so, they've both been doing very well. And so, if you'd like to read more about that, there's also an article linked below. And then, this was mentioned last time, but we also have an upcoming author that's coming to the high school and the middle school. His name is Neil Schusterman, and he'll be here on April 4th. And he's written a lot of well-known books, so that should be exciting.
The cafe at SRTC is now open. It is open most Wednesdays and Thursdays from February to early May. When school is in session, they have a breakfast menu from 8:15 to 9:15, and a lunch menu from 11:15 to 12:15. There's a link to get your reservation, and I hear that Mr. Nelson's a pretty big fan, as well as a link to contact Sam Bonzi, the communication coordinator, about any stories you think would be good for this. The school budget info is posted with links on that, as well as that the workshops are streamed on WSSR TV's YouTube channel, and then a short little blurb about how attendance matters and how that's important, as well as a link for the school calendar. The kindergarten registration is open, so children five years of age on or before, like October 1st, are eligible to register for kindergarten. Required documents include proof of residency and a birth certificate. There are some times for nights for registration, as well as a link for info. The free meals is also advertised with meal times for each of the different schools for breakfast, as well as a little thing to download the Sanford Spartan app. Then, some of the newest Main Street Memo highlights, including a tribute to the late Harland Horace Eastman, Sanford honoring a courageous service, and Sanford's Second Friday Art Walks, as well as just the links to stay up to date with the Sanford community. And that's it.
Before we move on to the budget update, Amy, I know you wanted to add something?
I just wanted to add that I'm going to read from the Spartan Times. So, if you haven't liked the Spartan Times, please do so, because they also do amazing articles. But the Sanford High School Winter Guard took first place at their competition at Dover High School on Sunday, March 10th, and their win was presented by the New England Scholastic Band Association. So, I just wanted to say kudos to the Winter Guard.
And can I add something?
Sure.
You know, I might be on TikTok once in a while. And so, on my For You page, the Spartan Times came up. They have their own TikTok, and it's quite entertaining, very appropriate. So, rest assured, Matt Nelson, no one's doing anything wrong, but they have a TikTok, and it's pretty awesome.
Oh, cool. I'm glad you said that. I didn't know that. I would like to add that our school committee student representative, Aiden Gendron, was selected as the recipient of the Maine Principals Association Award. This is awarded to an outstanding senior for each high school for academic excellence, leadership, and citizenship. So, congratulations. We're all very proud of you.
That may make it into a future Sanford Spotlight, just saying. All right. Congratulations, Aiden, and thank you, student representatives. Excellent. Want to give a budget update from our last school committee meeting last Monday. I presented the school 2024-2025 school budget to the city council at their city council budget meeting last Tuesday. That meeting was devoted entirely to the school committee, to the school department budget. If you remember, we, the school committee approved a budget on February 29th with a taxation increase of 11.1%. with a taxation increase of 11.1%. Working on that at last Tuesday's meeting, I put forward considerations to have that 11.1% increase in taxation, which our city councillor's feedback was it was too high. We did, I did have considerations that would bring that 11.1% down to 8.4%. Those considerations include us being able to have some savings in health insurance as we're able to look at a no-bid option there to get some savings. We also swapped out a first-team fall sport to accommodate volleyball. We also have an electricity adjustment, some savings in electricity that will take effect starting in November of 2024. We also did some reorganization at central office with the elimination of a, a consideration of elimination of a part-time position, as well as another full-time administrative assistant position. We also had a custodian, a second-shift custodian. That position must be eliminated. And a school councillor at Sanford Middle School eliminated. And then there would be some additional savings through the month of September for any SR positions that would be carried over into this budget. As I mentioned, all of those totaled to 8.4%. Feedback that we received from the city council after last Tuesday's presentation. And understand, this is very difficult and challenging because the city council has not heard the municipal budget yet. I think they see that the impact on the school budget, and I think there's people who understand that impact and are concerned about that, but also are concerned about the taxation. So there's thoughts of looking at what would a budget be of reduced from 8.4% to 8%? What would 7.5%, what would 7% look? So those are the things that we are looking at. We had a budget workshop this evening to start being able to look at that work. The city council budget meetings will continue tomorrow, 4 o'clock. That will be the focus of tomorrow's budget workshop at 4 o'clock with the city council is the municipal budget. There is a public hearing on both the school budget and the city council budget scheduled for tomorrow night during the regular city council meeting, right here in the chambers that begins at 6 o'clock. So that's the time where people have a public opportunity to come back to speak on both the municipal budget and the school budget for that. As we look ahead for us, we have the, there'll be another city council budget meeting a week from tomorrow. That would be the 26th. Because the timeline has the city council approving the school budget at their school committee, at their city council meeting on April 2nd. So that's the timeline that we are working to. Just a reminder that the, once the city council approves a school budget, that would then go to the citizens for a voter referendum that would take place in June. The city budget does not go to referendum. This would just be in terms of the, for the school piece. I wanna thank all the people who are continuing to follow the budget process, continuing to advocate for the different programs and different positions that we have. It's very challenging and very difficult work where we can continue to meet the needs of our school department while at the same time doing our best to balance that with the impact to our taxpayers and to our community. So that's the update and the timeline. With that, one reminder, public hearing tomorrow night, 6 o'clock during the city council, regular city council meeting to talk about the school or municipal budget.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Directors' reports. Mr. Bucier is gonna discuss pre-K lottery update and vape prevention committee update.
Good evening. Start off with pre-K. For the 2024-2025 pre-K program, our lottery closed on Friday, March 15th, this past Friday. We received 117 total applications. The list of applications have been sent to Ledmire so that they can provide recommendation on the student's appropriate school zone based on the home address. Once we receive the transportation information back, we'll begin selecting students to fill those 96 slots. In making those selections, if you remember, it's important that we look at the demographics of our pre-K classrooms as they need to mirror the demographics of the populations in our schools. Looking at the number of economically disadvantaged students we have, multilingual learners, and those students receiving special education services. That 117 number, it's not too far off what we had last year. I think when we had last year's lottery, we had 109 students. What happens over the, the next six months, however many months are between now and when school begins, you'll have some of those families that will move, some families will decide to make a different decision. A lot of different factors happening, happen. So I'm hopeful we can try to get everybody in that wants to join us. Our goal is to notify the families the first week in April of their acceptance into the pre-K program. We did move that timeline up about three weeks because our hope is to get these students registered and to screen them at the end of the school year instead of in the fall. And the reason for getting the pre-K students screened in the spring is to help us better develop classroom placements. But also if a student needs a CDS referral, we can get those referrals in before the summer months begin. So that's why we did, we learned from our first couple of years and we are, we've made that adjustment there. So pretty excited about pre-K and the strong enrollment numbers there. In terms of our vape prevention committee, we did meet last week. We had a good meeting. We began the meeting by looking at our data. What is our vape and tobacco numbers this year compared to last year? And so the school administrators put together what they had for data. And we looked at the start of the school year through the end of February. So that was a timeframe we were looking at. At the middle school, the numbers went from 29 to 6. And at the high school, the numbers went from 45 to 28. And so those numbers are encouraging. We believe that the attention we have brought to the issue and the support we are providing to students makes, is making a difference. A key part of that support has been the work of our substance use counselor, Susan Lombardo. Susan is a licensed drug and alcohol counselor who has been with us since September. So far, she has had 60 referrals from both of our schools. At the middle school, she's had 29 referrals and she has 14 students that she's currently working with. And at the high school, she received 36 referrals and she's currently working with 29 students. Interesting note, seven of the students that she's working with at the middle school meet the clinical definition of a substance use disorder. And 25 of those students at the high school meet the definition of having a substance use disorder. And so when we think about this, this is not just vaping tobacco. This is also marijuana is the bigger one with that. Our vape numbers are doing better, our marijuana numbers are up a bit, just as a side note. Looking ahead to next year, we're working to find ways to sustain the important work of our substance use counselor once the current grant funding runs out. One of these pieces was tobacco brief intervention training with our middle school and high school counselors and admin. Maine Health came and spoke to that group a couple of weeks ago about the brief intervention tool and what are some questions you can ask teens about tobacco to provide them, to help them with support. And the support we can offer to students is the My Life Might Quit Tobacco Hotline, where they can text and somebody will get back to them. A quick coach will get back to them and will check in on them to help them support. So trying to engage with teens in a way, in a platform that they are familiar with, in a confidential way with that. That's just one of the tools that we're exploring to sort of fill the gap that we're gonna have when Susan leaves. On Thursday, we will be meeting with Maine Health to discuss what other options are out there for us to continue to provide support for our students. Finally, just wanna share that in ongoing efforts to increase positive messaging and peer support around vaping, around tobacco prevention, the district has applied for a $10,000 mini-grant from Maine Health to create a PSA, working with students, to get students involved, to create PSA to discourage vaping and tobacco use. And so we should find out about that by the end of the week. But that's just also another grant opportunity out there that I think will be helpful in getting students involved. And that's all I have for this evening. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any thing you may have.
Can I just get those numbers again, Steve, about the referrals? You had 29 at the middle school, I think 36 at the high school?
29 at the middle school, 36 at the high school.
And then out of those, is it, you said?
14 are, 14 are open at the middle school, 29 are open at the high school. And then seven meet the clinical definition at the middle school and 25 meet the clinical definition at the middle school.
Thank you.
So one of the things, I just want to get back on the Susan Lombardo's position. We're always looking for grant funds on how to make that happen. But the, you know, the tobacco brief intervention training that we did with our middle school and high school staff, that's like low-level support, you know, you may have an issue here you go. But we're looking at a way where we possibly can sustain Susan's position. Is there potential funding out there through grants or is there insurance? Can we bill for insurance for some students? Because that, that is an option that we may be able to look at. So we are looking at all avenues and layering that support. You know, it's different from a student who's experimenting to a student who's, you know, that, that meets that clinical definition, trying to fill all those gaps in between. So we're working with Maine Health, who's been a dream partner, to see what we can provide. So more to be, more to, more to come on that, but I just wanted to provide you with that update tonight.
And she's currently covered by a grant at this moment?
Yeah, she's covered by a tobacco grant that we received. Yep, yep.
And when's that over? Sorry.
Those funds, when they are over, I don't wanna say for sure, but August or September is when I think the funds will be.
And we're waiting to hear back on another one that's gonna help us out with that?
Potentially. Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks so much, Steve. New business.
Three minutes? Nobody used the timer. Nobody used it?
Cheryl, you're on.
Good evening. Oh, they're already up. Excellent. So today, we're talking about the February financials. Right now, we're running about 1.5 million less than budget and, but we're running similar to last year. I think the majority of that is timing on some of our payments. Because if I look at it compared to last year and I ran an actual estimate for year end, I'm estimating to be between $100,000 and $300,000 less than budget. But I do not expect us to be $1.5 million below budget, not a, and we have a couple of, we still have March and August are both three payrolls that are coming up. So finding, oh, revenue. Revenue is running about $700,000 less, more than last year. Majority of that is subsidy, but also an act and payment coming in earlier because we're getting better at billing that on a more consistent basis. Federal grants, we've taken in $1.3 million in revenue and $1.2 million in expenses. So we're working really good on that. Enterprise Fund is running $1.7 million in revenue and $1.8 million in expenses. We're just running the one month behind on nutrition. On SR funds, we've taken in $2 million of revenue and $1.5 million in expenses. And we just, we reopened our budget on the SR3 to move some money between some different categories. So you're gonna start seeing a bunch of revenues coming in for SR3 very soon. Our other major grants is we've received $60,000 in revenue and $714,000 in expense, the RUS grant. Now, I thought we were waiting for the RUS grant, the revenue to get posted. It actually got posted last year, so we have a big fund balance that we're drawing down on. Auditors, I forgot, had told us we had to post that revenue. I didn't really agree with posting it in last year, but, because we hadn't done the expenses, but we did post it. So it came in slightly under what we had estimated the revenue, so you can see a negative. But we also have to bill out some cost to some other schools that are part of this on their portion of the, their cash portion of the RUS grant. So that will end up zeroing out. Next page. Article one, we're running about $116,000 below budget and $187,000 more than last year. That's all looks to be running fine. Article two, we're running below budget by $467,000 and we're over last year by $111,000. Majority of that is last year, outside placements, the new rates got enacted in October and they just got released last week. And so we're gonna start seeing some of the outside placements changing the amounts that we have to pay, which retro back to July. So I feel that we will see some uptick of expenses on that when we do start seeing those bills. I'm sure that's gonna take them a little while to process them and we'll start seeing those costs coming in probably momentarily. Article three, we're running about $203,000 below budget and $108 above less than last year. That's just doing timing of the difference between the SRO and a versus a teacher. And so the methodology change kinda skews the budget percentage because of that. So we're running within, we'll be at budget for that. I think last year, we came in at $3,000 under budget, so that one runs really close. Article four, we're running below budget by $38,000 and we're running above last year by $29,000. Most of that is waiting for uniforms. The uniforms have not arrived yet, so we have not paid for them. And so that's just a timing issue and that's a fair amount of money. So it shows up in this section. Article five, we are running above budget by $67,000 and we're running above last year by $78,000. Most of that is due to the change in methodology for the counseling director. It's now a July through June versus a September through August payment. So even though the dollar amount was similar, it's a difference in timing of getting paid. And so the way we do our budget percentage, it skews it a little bit, but that one's running within budget. Plus, we also purchased a lot of the curriculum stuff earlier this year. So that's why those are running above budget. Article six, we're running below budget by $22,000 and under, running above last year by $47,000. That is just timing and everything is running within budget. And I don't see that being a very big variance at all. Article seven, $7,000 under budget and $24,000 above last year. That one is running right on budget. Article eight, we're running about $30,000 under budget and we're running about $310,000 above last year. The reason is, is last year, we were behind by two payments at this time of the year. So I do think we're gonna run fine. We might be slightly over budget at year end due to special ed runs. Article nine, we're running about $444,000 less than budget and $351,000 less than last year. That's mostly because of the Willard Building last year, so that skews our data. But we're running within budget and Jason's watching that closely. And so I think we are really good on that one. Article 10, this one always runs really close because we know this one. $7,000 in, under budget and $86,000 less than last year. That's just your debt payments and so it's one month or half your interest. So your other half of your interest gets paid at the end of the year. And we're just starting to get our second half bills. I got my first one today. Article 11, we're running about $13,000 below budget and about $29,000 above last year. That's because of the new methodology. That's because of the new methodology and having WSSR TV under this category now. And so, we didn't really have a history with that included. Adult education, we're running about $18,000 less than budget, and we're running about $38,000 less than last year. That's due to a reorg that happened in mid-year last year. So, that's why that looks kind of a little odd, because we're running so much less than last year. It's because of the reorg that happened in the middle of last year. So, that is the financials.
Any questions? No? Okay. Recommendation to approve the February 2024 financials as presented.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor. Thank you, Cheryl. Okay, moving on. No old business and resignations, retirements, staff appointments, and all of those other items.
Sure. Couple of resignations to announce. Joseph Kumba, the EdTech III for the technology down at Sanford High School, Sanford Regional Technical Center. Joseph's moving, his family's moving to New Hampshire, so he has to give up that position. And then, a couple assistant football coaches at Sanford High School, Dan Stefanello and Joseph Messix, resigning their positions. Couple staff appointments to announce. We have a long-term substitute for a school councillor, upcoming school council maternity leave. That'll be Susan Mulcahy, who is a retired school councillor down at Sanford High School. And then, central office, we've been without the benefit specialists, human resources for a while now, but Kathleen, much or more, I probably butchered that name, but Kathleen will be joining us later this month. And there's no transfers and no other nominations to announce.
Okay. Thank you. We also don't have policies and procedures to present tonight, no items for future agendas. Next, our calendar announcements.
Sure. So, as I mentioned, the city council budget meeting tomorrow focused on the municipal budget. That's at 4 o'clock right here in the chambers. Public hearing on the school and municipal budget will be tomorrow evening, 6 o'clock during the regular city council meeting. We did have a, our next special education advisory committee meeting scheduled for this Wednesday, but we have canceled that meeting, that, so people can be able to attend Sharon Remick's memorial service on Wednesday. Next Monday, we have a policy committee, March 25th. Also looking to have a couple student disciplinary hearings. We'll schedule those next Monday. We'll have three of those. The first one will be at 3:00, the second one will be at 4:00, and the third one will be at 5:00. We're also going to schedule a school committee budget workshop next Monday, the 25th, at 6 o'clock. And then, I think it would be wise for us to also tentatively schedule another school committee budget workshop on Wednesday, March 27th. That will follow the city council budget meeting. That is on Tuesday, the 26th. Our next regular school committee meeting will be Monday, April 1st, here in the chambers at 6 o'clock. Also, on the first Monday of the month is our regular safety committee meeting. And then, our, we have another meeting scheduled for later in April. That would be after the April school vacation on Monday, April 22nd. And those are the upcoming calendar announcements.
Okay. And that leaves us with an adjournment for this meeting. Recommendation to adjourn at 6:54, 6:55.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Thank you, students, for being here tonight.